If you would love to, please join me in a prayer and a pledge of allegiance, please. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we forgive those who trespass against us. And we that not temptation, but the worst from evil; for thine is the kingdom, and power, and glory forever, amen. A pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you very much. All right, roll call, please. Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerda?
Yes.
Do I have a motion to accept the agenda and the addendum, please?
I'll move.
Roll call. Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerda?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Okay, we'll start off with administrator's report. We have Brooke intermediate, Shelley Sowers.
Actually, as you guys are aware, we started our big move today. I'd like to thank Joe because he got our building rolling well in advance, and he made this very smooth, got a lot of the boxes well out of the way, made it easier for middle school to get in here. Thank Jason for getting the trucks. So we had a truck backed up to our door about eight twenty this morning, and I had that thing rolling about all day. We did take a little longer lunch break because we were all exhausted. And I would like to thank my entire staff because we were like ants today. We were in and out and moving that stuff. Like, we had the walkie, so I'd say, "All right, I'm coming to the high school. I'm at this door," and they were there waiting on me, the ones that were over there. And then the ones that were in the building, they were wherever, whatever door I was going to. So we are almost 100% completely out of broke. We have, like, a kidney table, a couple of bookshelves that we wanted to take, and a few things that we probably should put in the dumpster so that middle school doesn't have to deal with it. And that's about it. And I'm ready to turn the keys over to JP and we're within the high school.
That was wonderful.
So it was...
It's really looking good.
Yeah, it was amazing. It really, truly was. And there was smiles on people's faces at the end of the day, which made things look really well. Along those lines, we had teacher appreciation beginning this month. We got our staff T-shirts, and then today and tomorrow, we worked in. They're getting a little massages to make them feel a little better about this whole move. So we're treating them a little, getting them on the happy side. Yesterday was last day of school. It was our Jonas with dads. It wasn't originally supposed to be the last day of school, but we just left it there because it was already early out. It was a big success. The kids were happy. They had to show their dads around the building one last time before we're off to the high school. Awards Day was Tuesday, and it was a big success. A little hot in the gym, like it always is. But I said, "Guess what? Next year is going to be in a nice new air-conditioned gym, so that'll be awesome." I want to thank the anonymous donor that donated money to make sure that every kid got to have ice cream because we did have an ice cream truck that day, and it was an awesome treat for those kids. Same with the sheriff's department. Yesterday came for any kid that didn't have a meal figure there. They came and took kids around and made sure they got their nuts, too. So Sheriff's Department was a great added bonus for that.
Lots of kids, too. They went through a lot of kids.
They did. They went through tons of kids. They would go down. I have teachers texting, "Hey, this kid doesn't have anybody. This kid doesn't have anything." They'd take up a group of kids, they got their donuts, and a few of them got to go out and see the canines and the lights and sirens and all of that fun stuff. So we had a great partnership with them as well. Last thing, which is not the only thing that we have had, but we had test scores come out this week, looked at them a little bit. Not where we want them to be, but definitely we have shown growth. And if the actual growth goes in line with the assessment that we give in our district, we've really made these kids grow. I know we like to have snow days, but the past two years, not having those snow days have been a bonus because we've made up a lot of those COVID days that even though they were virtual, they're just not as good as being in person. And that has been a huge, tremendous help for us. We've been able to get through a lot of curriculum in those days. So that's my...
Thank you. Awesome. It's good news.
Can I say, I wanted to thank, I had a student in her building, and he just finished up. And I really wanted to thank Ms. Treeherne, Mrs. Ross, Mrs. Blatner, Ms. DeVall, Ms. Church, Mr. Fances, Mrs. Ray. They all did such a wonderful job. And to, you know, go to these things and look at the growth that's done. I don't know what the magic you do there, but, you know, if it's just, it's unbelievable. And, you know, you see it all over in that building. It's just, it's amazing. So thank you very much.
Yes, thanks.
Very good. We'll move on to K-2 elementary, Dawn Windland, please.
All right. We've been busy also. We just finished up testing May 3rd for math at OG. So we kind of ran right into the last days. Some of the fun things and some of the rewards we were doing, we met our goal for chocolate sales. So we treated the entire school to a movie called Wish. We did that at the main United Methodist Church. They have activity building, which was dark. It was really nice. So the kids had this dark period to go, and they thought it was fun. That was the right to do that. On May 3rd, our second grade went to Oakley. We had a great time. I actually participated in that, and it was a very nice time. Hadn't been to Oakley in years, so it was very nice. So encourage anyone to go that hasn't been there. We also visited the petting zoo, and our first and second grades went to a park day individually. Our fourth ninth weeks PBS reward was a bounce house and the magic of science presentation. We also treated the kids to cone ice, and that was everyone in the building, and that was on May 8th. We had our celebrations just this past week on the 13th and the 14th. And we had them on the lawn on the 13th, and it was very nice. It was completely covered with oats. We had pictures where you could just, all you could see were people and kids. It was really exciting, and I think everyone enjoyed having that outside activity. But the weather did not cooperate on the movie, so we were inside. So it did make it kind of hot and a little sticky, but it went well. The kids were, the kindergartners especially, were so excited and like running to get their awards and bouncing and skipping. And that joy is just wonderful to see, and that's what I said to parents. If they continue that joy throughout their college or their high school careers, we're going to be very lucky because it was just exciting to see that. Seacrest has also been doing a lot of fun things as well. They went to the petting zoo. The students participated in the third ninth weeks reward on May 6th. They were treated to a movie at Premier Theaters, Come Through Panda. The kids enjoyed that. They also had their annual dance party, which featured Mrs. Fox and Mr. Stevens returning and leading the festivities. And the kids really had a good time at that. They did their end of year celebration on the nights in the 10th. And after that, the kindergartners went to Stacy Farms, where they got to pick strawberries and they got to bring some home. So that was exciting. And they finished up with a bounce house for the fourth ninth weeks PBS reward on the 13th. So with all that said, the last few days, we're using these to wrap up and kind of curb some of our things and get rid of some things for our move, which will be in December. But we're also starting to plan August and September activities. And finally, just want to thank all the parents for their support this year and to wish our families and our staff a wonderful and safe summer break.
Thank you very much. All right, Metta Brook Middle School, JP Ray.
All right. So we've also enjoyed the controlled chaos of the campus over the last few days. I'd say we're about 75% of our building. We realized how much stuff's in the art room and the STEM room over the last 24 hours, and that's been fun. End of year activities after testing we got done, and it kind of became just like kids were not in the building. They were playing kickball, or we had cornhole, or they went on a trip to Skyzone, or they went to the movies, or all these different things going on to make the last week or so an enjoyable time and just kind of enjoy. Enjoy spending some time with their friends. They were helping us pack up if they wanted to. And this one particular boy, he kept taking things home that teachers were trying to discard. And his mom finally sent a note and said, "Please stop sending stuff home." So then we got to the end of the year. We had our awards day. We did have a gym this year. We figured parking at the high school would be a nightmare if we tried to have, especially the eighth grade one, at the high school this year. And I don't have like a 90-minute presentation here or anything because I don't do those. But when people ask us why we do this, then there they are. Your future class in 2028. This has been a great class academically, athletically. You know, they've done a lot. We've got great musicians in there. We've got people who perform in CPAC. We've got people who do rodeo in that class. We had just all kinds of different activities. Club softball, club baseball, stuff outside of school. But they were a good group to have. Eighth grade students or staff will definitely miss them. And once we wrapped up with them, and they mostly went home that day, you know, moving out, going over to Brooke, our teachers were pleasantly surprised by, you know, they thought the doomsday of going to an elementary building. I think they're okay now. And, you know, our master schedule is about done for next year. So once we get everybody moved, it'll be on the 24, 25, so.
Yep. All right, thanks, Eric. Good. All right. It's time if anybody would like to speak under public participants. I'm going to open that up. Anybody have anything to say? You weren't speaking, too? No, you've warned me before the meeting.
She just wanted to come. She told me ahead of time.
I scratched her off the list.
I'm just impressed with all that Prince has brought to us tonight, so.
She was a mover today, too. She had a truck full of ladies, and they were driving building to building. Boxes piled up.
We're trying to help.
Yeah.
I'm sure it's a challenging time, for sure.
Smooth, smooth as you could probably make it. And thanks to Bubba, so we got the U-holes off of them.
Oh.
We'd gotten some off ICR, and it didn't really work out. So we called Bubba's and got a couple of big U-holes. And honestly, it was a blessing in disguise because that was the way to do it, especially with the rain and, you know.
Very good.
Yeah.
All right, then, we're going to move on to the treasures report, and I'm going to turn it over to Brandon Gray.
All right. I approve of the minutes from the April 18th regular meeting. Approve of the April financial report. Approve of the four then announced certificates. Approve renewing our contract with local government services. They always handle the debt conversion that prepare financial statements for the audit. Approve the agreement with Fifth Third Bank for ACH electronic vendor payment process. This is something that law school districts are trying out kind of right now, seeing if it's going to work. We're hoping it's going to be pretty successful. Basically, we'll cut down the amount of paper checks that we issue, and there's potential to get some rebates from certain companies that get payment quicker. So, you know, we're always looking for ways to save money. Making some budgetary amendments to some routine year-end actions that we have to take. H, approve a transfer from the general fund to the food services fund. Again, benefit costs and cost of food and everything. It's just kind of something unfortunately that we have to do. Hopefully, you know, it improves as we consolidate the schools. So, you know, we're looking at some different ways here to try to reduce that or eliminate that deficit. I approve the resolution to authorize employer pickup. This is just something that we have to get with our STRS requires. We just had to get that on here. And then J is approve the five-year forecast. It's just an update from the November forecast. Really, pretty much everything. Looking as stable as it was in November. Benefit costs are really the only drastic, not a really drastic change, but the only change that's something we really need to keep an eye out for. We've been shopping around on the health insurance. I think we're definitely going to see an increase this year, but I think we do have some ways that we can kind of reduce it as much as we can. It's just something that, you know, it's kind of out of our control, and everyone deals with it. But other than that, you know, I'm pretty satisfied with, you know, where we're staying right now. So hopefully, it stays stable.
Good. I was worried about the five-year.
Yeah. I mean, like I said, the state aid's always changing, you know.
Yeah.
You know, actually, this week, a big conversation was we're switching, everyone gets pre-lunch next year, which is great, but then that reduces some of your state, you know, affects the general fund. So, you know, there's always pluses and minuses, but still, I think it's much more stable than it has been.
Yeah, the five-year, as a board member, you see that, and you're always...
Especially towards the end.
Oh, yeah. You're always like, "Great." Yeah.
You're four and five, really.
Please don't change too much. If it does, you know, it goes far faster.
Yes.
All right, very good. Do I have a motion for items A through J?
Motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Roll call. Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yerda? Yes. All right, we'll move on to standing committees. Policy, Matt and Mike.
I just think that we should be aware that Governor Dewine signed into law today and as it applies to cell phones in schools. So we really need to find new fast on that because I know handbooks have to be designed and such, and we're going to have to figure out the policy. I know the Department of Education is going to release a recommendation as well. But...
It kind of works, actually. We were already working on the high school. Middle school's kind of got their own system. But, yeah, we need to, we need to kind of tie them together, too, when that one's done, you know, so it's a little more uniform across the building.
And it seems like almost like we would need to be like an overall district policy. You know what I mean? Like, instead of just... I would think so if it's a state law, when we would be really...
Now, high school's working on one this year, and it just, they kind of ran out of time. But I think you're right. I think there's got to be a way to unite what they put in with the middle school and kind of, you know...
Right.
Get a sense of commonality between them.
And then I do have one question on one of our policies. Someone asked me, and I didn't have the answer. The Chromebooks for the seniors that they turn in, they were... They said that, a couple of parents said that they thought at some point they were told they graduating seniors were going to get a keep when they got there. And I said, "I don't know." What happened?
My fifth grade.
Did your fifth grade?
Yeah, they're going down to my fifth grade.
That was a while ago. Do you remember, James?
It was discussed, but we never fully decided.
Okay. I was going to say, I know, I vaguely remember the discussion. That was years ago. But, yeah, I don't, I don't know.
I think I just got near Boston.
Yeah, I think it might be like five years ago.
I remember something about...
I vaguely remember it, too.
But, yeah, we've been just recycling, so the seniors, they come to my fifth grade.
I just kind of wondered about the longevity use of a Chromebook, how durability after four years. I mean, is that realistically a device that you can pass on? And, you know, Chromebooks, I don't have a lot in them to begin with. And then, you know, after four years of usage, I just wondered that...
We're still running on the four-year old, and the speed's not a huge issue yet. They have, their auto update is 2029. That's what, that's as long as we can use them for state testing officially. They're not going to be real effective by that data. So we got to look at replacing them.
Do you think they'll be effective till 2029? Because I've...
They'll be usable till then. I mean, you'll notice that, you'll notice between a new one and that one that there's a difference. A huge difference.
Some of them aren't very old. Like, we've only had some of them like two years. I don't know. We've cycled four years yet, haven't we?
No, we have not got, yeah, we haven't got rid of any to get new. We've just been adding to the same batch.
So the seniors would have received them not... Was I surprised by that?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay. I was just curious. Thank you.
Okay, athletic, Mike and Brad.
I was hoping to get an update on the softball game. She has a message. They were in the first inning when I left, or when I left to come here. So I don't have any idea on that game.
And I know that we were hosting the district track. Yes, that's Saturday. Yeah. You know, it was Wednesday, Wednesday...
Wednesday, Saturday.
Wednesday, Saturday. So we had last night. So it'll also be Saturday as well, so.
Anything under student achievement? Mike?
No, not at this time. Legislative, Matt took the night under on that with the cellphone. So no, nothing there.
Okay. I hope you got some good news for Mideast. Anything going on? It's always good.
It's always good, yes. In terms of the CDC, they're still working on getting the bus driver licensure certification. That's so many hoops that you have to jump through. Nothing that, other than that, the one thing I did learn that affected us as a district was that the campgrounds at the Wilds are taxable. And so they've been taxable for a few years. And so we did, I got over to Devon after our board meeting. I got over to him on Tuesday, and because our board meeting was Monday night. And we did get a check from the Wilds for approximately $900, but that was $900 we'd done before. So that's something that we'll be getting. Is that right, Brandon?
Totally right, yep. Okay.
Okay.
Mostly it was more than I know. Yeah. We received, that's, we received some last year, too. I think it was a catch-up. It was like $3,000.
Oh, really?
Okay.
Yeah. It was because Mideast knew nothing about it. So obviously, we're more involved than they were then for us. So, yeah, that's, that was the only thing we had going on over there at this time. So a lot of the kids are graduating. We have quite a few graduates from Mideast. Their certificate night is the 21st at Zaneville High School football field. So if anybody has anybody that they want to go see, get their certificate.
A bit nice move there versus in Cybys game, yeah. Those were hot, very long nights.
Rain nights, rain nights are the ones after. So if it rains on the 21st, it'll be the 22nd and 23rd.
So my understanding, actually, to a friend, he's got a granddaughter that's graduating from Mideast. So they get a graduation at Mideast, and then they also graduate. That's good.
Because they're, yeah, they're students both places. So they can go to both, and typically, they all do.
Good.
Yeah.
All right. Personnel insurance negotiations. That's Brad and Matt.
I did, when I touched on it, because our insurance renewal was July 1st. So it is possible that we might have to have a special meeting in early June, depending on if we do switch companies, as to when they need the agreement signed. So we'll see. So I think we're shopping about a dozen companies right now, so.
Is that something that, is there any certain companies that insure school districts?
No, I mean, there's a lot of companies. I mean, we do have a lot of flexibility. It's just, and really, what you're shopping out is different parts. Shopping out your stop laws, since we're self-insured, then your third-party administrator that can process your claims and that. So there's multiple parts to it. But usually, your carriers kind of, you know, have certain companies that they want you to go through. So they kind of bundle it together.
Okay. All right. Building grounds, Darren, do you have anything?
Yeah, I spent a good bit of time up the shack this past weekend.
Did you?
It's, the basketball hoops are in. Kelly's happy with the volleyball somewhat. Late room and wrestling room look good.
I have been up there. I need to go up.
It's pretty, John.
Is it? I need to go up.
Fees have been changed, so, yeah. About to get you a phone, pyramid part. Talk to me afterwards.
They heard you were up there, so they changed.
Right. They need to rewalk this week. It is nice. Yeah, and the video turned out nice as well.
Then anything I have as far as building grounds? So I didn't get jumped, but I got approached by a gentleman, a local gentleman, about some of the grass. And it's, it's under construction, you know. We're, the grounds have never looked like this, and it's only because we're under construction. And the guy was real nice, and I called Devon. And there was some stuff we could weed eat on the backside, more toward the homes on the backside of the school. And right away, they took care of that, cleaned it up. He sent me a very nice picture. But this along 821, we can't really get in there. It looks terrible. I know, where all the dirt's piled, you know? And it's basically because we've been told not to go in there and do anything. So if you wonder, you hear anything from anybody, just let them know that this isn't par for the course. We're dealing with a, you know, a construction situation, so.
Yeah, the township's actually offered to get along 821, but we, we're moving power and gas lines so we can build that turn lane.
How are we coming along the turn lane?
It should be going here any minute. Like, we've got all of the right-of-way switched over, which actually didn't, it didn't take much more right-of-way. But AEP is moving some pools, and Columbia Gas is moving. The village is fine where they're at. They're going to be okay, so they don't have to move. But, yeah, the township, you know, called them today. Can we get in there?
Is Byzville...
No, you can.
Is Byzville paving that? The turn lane?
That's what I was...
Brad, you need to... Now, I just wanted to mention that because I know there's probably people saying, "Oh, God, why don't they do something about it?" It's just kind of out of our control right now. So props to everybody out there. They're doing their job. It's just a crazy time, so. All right, anything? Nothing on audit? We never seem like we...
Well, we're out of audit right now. Yeah, good.
Community outreach? That's Matt, Darren.
There's been a lot of discussion about class fees and such in the community. I've been following the stuff, and there's been people talking about wanting to make donations for, you know, to try to pay off some of the class fees because, as I understand it, you know, it can create a problem with transcripts not being released. It could limit, you know, future possibilities and such. I reached out to Brandon and kind of got some numbers early on, but I know that there's some groups that are wanting to...
An elderly couple paid them off. They were talking about lunch fees.
Lunch fees? So it's, that's already...
Lunch, lunch fees, a lot of them get paid automatically, you know, based on income and things. But, you know, by the time you graduate, you've got to bill, you know? But, you know, by the time you graduate, you've got a bill, you know, and it, and obviously at that point the kitchen's calling going, "Hey," you know, like, "We gotta catch this up." An elderly couple came in during that, paid it all off. I've had a lot of people call me too and say, "Well, you know, if there's lunch fees, we can pay them." Like, yeah, somebody already come in to care of all.
Very good.
So, wanted to remain anonymous. I was gonna say. Yeah, an elderly couple come in and said, "If you have any lunch fees," and did it last year too. Um, just come in and say, "If you have any lunch fees for kids, we'll just, like, come off the books."
I know they're not a fan, that's really.
Oh, it's amazing. Yeah, amazing.
Amazing people out there.
And without anybody saying anything, like, it just, it's kind of become a yearly thing last two years, like, you know. We don't reach out or anything. We don't post anything. They show up, yeah.
Very good. All right, Devon, uh, anything under business about?
Uh, back report, you got a report in here on that. Um, they had their meeting here a few nights ago, so that was in there. That's it. That's just kind of an update.
Okay, I'm gonna turn it over to you for the super, Mr. Detrick, for the superintendent's report.
A lot here, so bear with me. Uh, first of all, um, we had to, sorry for the addendum, but we had to add Brady Blatner back. Only had a mix-up between the building and this office. Somebody thought they sent something, the other person didn't, whatever. But, uh, have the honor of hopefully hiring Brady Blatner for high school math. Be fantastic, another alumni.
Another alumni.
You know, I can't think of a better one to, to join the, the team, so, excited about that. Uh, a few other names in there that you'll recognize, of course, and then we have the shuffle around.
Okay.
Um, so, you have Mrs. Sowers and Mrs. Windland who are, you know, moving into their new positions. Here in a minute, we're gonna riff their old positions, but they'll be moving into their new positions next year for the new building. I've had some questions on this. It looks confusing. Really, we kind of went away from the principal assistant principal titles because they're kind of restrictive and you think principal, assistant principals, discipline, et cetera, we, we're not looking at that. When we're taking five buildings and going to one, we're kind of taking everybody's skill set and saying, "How can we build the best team?" You know, so we sat down and we said, "Okay, you know, where are your skills at?" You know, uh, Mrs. Sowers is big on data and instructions. Um, and you could hear from what, what they talked about. Last night I was thinking about it, so what's going on? You know, Mrs. Harris, you know, rebuilding, everything going on with it and, you know, the public participation. So, he said, "Here's how we're gonna do it," and we created these names pretty much to get the most bang for a buck out of it. Uh, you'll also see Doug Pfeffer is going to be six twelve Dean of Students. He's actually gonna be nine twelve Dean of Students for the next two years, but when we're in the same building, it'll be six twelve. Um, so that's a little confusing too, but we're, we're creating positions and prepping now for the change two years from now for those guys as well. And then finally, I wanted to point out, we are hiring a new high school princ- a new high school principal, Marcy Murphy, who's here with us today. Um, exceptional leader, ton of experience, even if it wasn't Shannon Doh. I'm sorry, I couldn't help myself on that. But honestly, ton of experience, uh, leadership-wise, curriculum-wise, uh, crazy amount of certi- certifications that we're gonna take advantage of. She comes to us with some great fresh ideas, so, uh, obviously new high school principal is exciting. Okay, some sad resignations and retirements. Todd Bates, uh, he is not actually retiring. He is retiring, but he'll be coming back as a retiree hired, which I'll be talking about here in a couple pages. Uh, Jan Ross and Brenda New are like staples, you know, at Seacrest, uh, you know, sad to see them go, but, you know. Moving on to bigger and better things. Uh, resignations of Scott Golick, Harris Ong, who's only with us a year, Pat Sullivan, that's just on the maintenance and grounds part. He was helping with weed eating. He's not gonna do that anymore, so he's still going to be a bus driver. He just, yeah.
I was wondering about that.
And Mr. Wheeler, as we've discussed, the reduction enforcement D is, that is the old positions that are now transitioning into the new positions that you guys approved last month and then we just put most of these guys in. Uh, M O U with Sam Von Drice, that's a pay thing that, uh, Joe and I worked out, you know, union worked great with. It's just fixing something that kind of got messed up in the meantime. Uh, donation from, uh, Tony and Susan Kuklicka to help with the cost of a bronze plaque outside the stadium in memory of Joe Casper, and that's, that's been a fantastic and really, uh. Kuk- the Kuklikas in the Seacrest, she's got a story with that and it's, it's been impressive. Uh, community eligibility provision agreement is presented, a Marisa agreement. Uh, I is, this is the Children and Internet Privacy Act, which is what you have here. We have to talk about, we have to educate on acceptable use and safety with technology. And as a result, there's some funding tied to it, your little one here.
His little book.
Yeah. Um, and James can answer any questions on that. We have to have an opening hearing, so if anybody would like to speak on that here at the end, they can. Approve the updated administrative agreement as presented, which is tied to contracts tonight. And approve the resignation to accept the resignation of Todd Bates for retirement purposes and to initiate procedures under Ohio law for the retirement and reemployment of the employee as presented. As you guys probably remember, that is a whole process.
Yeah.
And return the service vouchers to a district administrator dated five six and five ten is presented for the track meeting. Um, I do wanna go back. There was one thing I meant to tell you, those Murphy, Pfeffer, Sowers and Windland should be three-year contracts, so we have to make a last-minute addition to that. Thank you, Brandon, for catching up. I don't know how those got kept off there. I also meant to mention too, this reorganization of the administration is saving a hundred and fourteen thousand a year each of the next two years. And it will probably go up in the new building, terminal level we should make there. You know, it's not very often you can get more efficient, more effective and save a ton of money, you know, so.
We have to.
Yeah, yeah, we, we don't have a choice. We'll have to one.
We talked about it a couple meetings ago, you know, there were some people here, uh, they had concerns and I, I appreciate concerns. There's always concerns. But, uh, when you're in Devon and Brandon's position and even the board, you know, there's, there's stuff that is very difficult and, and there's nothing ever easy to do, but change, change is necessary, you know? We got, we got a situation with the school and, uh, I just, I'm just glad to see how it's, everything's working out. And I think you and Brandon are doing excellent jobs with the situations you have to deal with, so.
I appreciate it.
Wanted to thank you guys for that.
Part of that, uh, part of that too is also Gail Thomas retiring, which is not listed, but she is having, they're having a little party for a couple of them. They're broke tomorrow, twelve thirty, twelve, if anybody wants to. So, all of that being said. I know, it's pretty worried.
Eight through L.
I'll move.
Do I have a second? Do you have a second?
You guys are right on.
There's one after your office.
Rule call, please.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yurda?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Uh, no new business, correspondence, information, you give everything?
Yep.
Anybody else, information, the board wanna mention, talk, anything?
I did everything. Congratulations.
Yeah, absolutely. I wanted to congratulate you. You know, I think you went school, I think Y. Was he in your grade weight or Y?
Yeah, I was a year under Y.
Okay, you're, wow, you're already teaching, geez.
That's what we were talking about.
Oh, my God. Well, you, you're, I know your mom and dad, I'm glad you're here, really appreciate it. It's gonna be, I like to see people come back like that.
Thank you.
You wanna do any coaching?
Yeah, football.
Good.
I figured, yeah, one of the best out, wear the brown and white, so.
Yeah.
Glad to have you there.
Yeah, it's awesome, weight room. Yeah.
Brady, I saw, I saw the picture of you dumping ice on my head during A, A, A L S Ice Bucket Challenge.
Yeah. I watched him grow up and it's like he's sitting here getting a job as a teacher, so, oh my gosh. I wanna thank Joe for coming tonight. Thank you, Joe.
Do you wanna do anything with the technology thing or?
No, wait, you know, nobody's putting up work. We do this every year.
Okay. All right, with that being said.
Davis does a great job of following all those things, but nobody ever comments, 'cause nobody really understands the very little money.
That being said, thanks, everybody. I like to see everybody here like this. It's a good-looking group of people that come to support us, so thank you. Uh, do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Rule call.
Mr. Humphrey?
Yes.
Mr. Moats?
Yes.
Mr. Singleton?
Yes.
Mr. Yurda?
Yes.
Mr. Dudley?
Yes.
Next board meeting, June twentieth at six P M. Thank you.
I appreciate it, guys.